Yeah, I did those.
Okay.
I have notes on them. I want to sit back here again.
It is now 6:30 here in Reed Field Bank, so I'll call this regular meeting of the Reed Field Select Board to order. If you're able, would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the government for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask that folks leave their electronic devices off, ringers down, and will pay attention to the meeting at hand and remind everybody that we have rules of conduct for public meetings. Please wait to be recognized to speak. If you do go to the podium, please state your name and your address in town. Same thing for anyone who's online. Obviously, you won't be going to the podium. Shaun will be monitoring the chat room and recognizing folks there. So the first item of business is the Select Board Meeting minutes of June 20th, 2020.
Bill, are you able to let people in? It looks like it's not letting people in to Zoom. It says there's two people in the waiting room.
Thank you, Shaun.
Sorry. Thank you.
Was that you or him?
Oh, Bill. Hi, I didn't do it.
Okay.
It's the magic behind the curtain.
Is everyone now connected?
I think so.
Okay, well, now that everybody is connected, I'll restate that. So we do have our rules of conduct for public meetings. They're posted on the wall. Please wait for your turn to be recognized and state your name and address when you come to the podium. And folks online will be recognized also. Our first item of business tonight is item 24-001, the minutes of the Select Board Meeting of June 20th. I don't think that's right. I'm on the wrong agenda. Well, that's not going to work. Huh. I have all the July 24th stuff. So Shaun?
July 24th.
So we're looking at the Select Board Meeting minutes of July 24th.
Right.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. Is there any discussion? Angelica, I think these are before the corrections I gave you today, which was that a member of the public didn't have their last name on, which was Alan Schneider. And just to mention that the Town Managers' Report and the Treasurer's Report are attached to the agenda or they're available online because we didn't put anything in the minutes about what was spoken. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous. Okay, the second, so that was item 24-015. The second item is 24-016, warrants six through 10, and that was Shaun this quarter, so I'll pass it over to you, Shaun.
So I'm going to do six and seven first. So warrant six and seven was a big chunky one. It was for $473,820.54. The big chunk of that is our school payment to RSU 38 of $338,000. We also had $4,883 for Girl Palmer for sidewalk engineering. We had a last payment, $55,000 to Pike Industries for shoulder work on Church Road. We just over $30,000 for Lucas striping. That is all the roads in Reed Field now striped. We paid our quarterly animal shelter dues of $1,162.
And what was the total?
That was six and seven for $473,820.54.
Is there someone who would move that, please?
I move to accept.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Dave. I have a motion and a second to approve warrants eight, six, and seven. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous.
Warrant eight was for $4,100. This was Heritage Days activities and for fireworks and such for $4,100. People like fireworks. That was an amazing fireworks show.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous. Take it away, Shaun.
And lastly, we had warrants nine and 10 for some $127,021.87. A major portion of that was $32,000 in fixing some debt that we've been working on and with a past resident.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
And a second from Steve. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I'd just like to make a comment that the $32,000 that's being sent to a former property owner in town is part of our discussion later in the meeting about the ordinance for tax-acquired properties and refunding the proceeds. Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor? It is unanimous. Okay. Moving on. Look at that, we're even in time. We come to our communications section. There's Select Board communications. If the Select Board has any comments to give to the public, this is the time for that. Does anyone have any announcements or recognitions?
This is Shaun. I'd just like to thank all the volunteers that took part in Heritage Days. I don't think I've seen the beach that busy since I've lived here, so that was a pretty fun part of the day. I didn't think it could get any wetter down there, but it really did. But it didn't upset anybody and just thanks to all those different committees that were a part of putting the day on. It was a huge success.
I'd like to thank Dennis Price for essentially organizing all of Heritage Days on his own. I know he had some input from other folks, but once again, he took the ball and really ran with it, so we really thank you, Dennis, for that. Seeing no other comments from the board, we will move on. Staff communications, we have 10 minutes for the Town Managers' Report, and we are not doing a Treasurer's Report tonight. Is that correct?
No, we are.
We are?
I'll make it brief. It's July, so the year-to-date and the month are the same, so it's a good one. So the Town Manager's Report, we actually prefer I want to go through. I'll try to be quick. But the tax bills have been printed in mail. An insert was included to help residents understand where and how to get tax assistance. The state's been going back and forth on the type of assistance that's available. We have a senior program. It's been canceled. It replaced it with something that's intended to help offset some of those costs. Probably a better approach in the long run, but in the short run, it looks awfully messy and it makes it hard for people to understand how to get tax assistance. If anybody has any questions or trouble with taxes, reach out to me or the town office, and we'll give you all the help we can with understanding the situation or applying for assistance if appropriate. So we do have local tax assistance programs. We have state programs that are available. And as noted, the state did expand some of the programs that they had offered to make up for the back and forth around senior tax freeze, which is no longer in effect. So we had our annual general assistance review recently, and we passed that with the site visit. We had a few minor issues that I need to address as part of their questionnaire. Generally speaking, we have seen fewer GA applications than in the past. Doesn't mean that people don't necessarily need help. It means that people might need it in different ways. The big thing I've seen is electric bills, people needing help with electricity rates. And so we do have some assistance locally for that as well as what's available for general assistance. So those are some programs that can be helpful. The new fire truck contract has been signed, and the equipment is on order. I completed and submitted our application to the bond bank as well. So that is in process to be taken care of. I did speak with Chief Mank following our discussion in the last couple of Select Board meetings, and we're in agreement that the issue of vaccine policy is very much in his purview and jurisdiction. It's not an operational concern for the chief and myself at this point, and we will likely be reviewing that policy this winter because things will change, and they have been changing. So the review is going to be in process. The current policy is that members be vaccinated and boosters are recommended because that was a question that was asked as well. Let's see, we've seen an increase in overtime for the maintenance staff and the CEO. I'm working to curtail that without impacting municipal services. This summer's been tricky because the maintenance staff got bogged down with the winter rainy weather, doing a lot of repair work, but they weren't necessarily able to get out and get ahead. So we did have some overtime when they were out trying to catch up when the sunny weather came. Not unreasonable, but I just wanted the board to be aware that that was happening, and we're keeping an eye on it. The, let's see, we're now using both old and new accounts in Trio. It's a bit more work for Teresa, but she's handling it well. And as part of this transition, when we get to the budget process next year, what we'll see is both sets of numbers, the old accounting and the new accounting for capital improvements and special revenue accounts. But when we get to the final budget that's going to go to voters next year, it will be with the new chart of accounts. And so that transition period will be complete, and we will not have to worry about having redundant accounting systems anymore. I want to thank Catherine and Dave for attending the Summer Residents' Meeting. It was on August 4th, and they discussed community issues broadly, but also things that are lake-related, like water quality, erosion, land use, and other matters. So thanks for attending. It was, the Summer Residents really appreciated that. And then I wanted to note that I attended the Annual Managers' Conference a few weeks ago and got some good training and made some good networking connections. So that was good for me and my professional development. Moving on to roads, traffic, parking, and safety. We are working with C.H. Stevenson to work on a slimmed-down road realignment project for the Nickerson Hill and PE Ridge Road. We've talked with the property owner and following that last Select Board meeting, the direction it was given, trying to do this in a cost-effective way that makes everybody happy. I think we will likely be able to get there. Chip and I met with the owners of the Weathervein Restaurant to discuss parking situation on Route 17. That situation has gotten a little bit better, but we still see folks parking on the road Friday, Saturday nights. We want to get them off the road. We have the MOU for the board to consider tonight. I had, as noted, given them kind of the green light to consider starting to implement that even before we got the MOU in place because we had Heritage Days. But it seems to be getting better, and they've made some good improvements already to that area. So I want to thank them for that, and we'll talk about more when we get to the, later in the agenda. Washouts have taken a great deal of time this summer and slowed other work, as noted. We have just been fighting wet conditions, and hopefully, we're getting some dry weather. If it persists, we'll be moving on to roadside brushwork. Now that the planets have been well-watered there, they're starting to grow over the stop signs and into the roadways, so we're going to hit that stuff next. Moving on to maintenance and transfer station. Water testing at the beach is ongoing. Test results have shown increased bacteria levels, but still well under State of Maine recommended thresholds. And when we're talking, we're seeing numbers in the 70s. Their threshold, I think, is about 350. So we're actually well, well under that. And we are reducing staff at the beach as attendance drops off. Couple last points here. We should be pretty well caught up with the cemetery maintenance this week. Again, the dry weather should give them a chance to finally get that under control. And then the last note, Sunday, September 27th is the last day of summer hours at the transfer station. Believe it or not, we're fast approaching Labor Day. So that's my Town Managers' Report. I'm happy to take any questions. Excuse me.
Carol, I have one, and I'm sorry to have, because we kind of had a crisis at the house a second. So I think you were just going into the Chief Mank and the vaccine thing when I had to bolt. The question I had is he was basing his stick-toing the policy based on a policy he was pointing to within the state or somewhere. And I guess I was just asking what policy he's, you know, cited, just his own policy that he's leaning to. Is that, is that not going to be forthcoming?
It's Maine Emergency Management Association. It's still under there.
Can I, I was just asking if I could see that. Okay, so Maine, say again?
Maine, M-E-A? Is that what, Maine Emergency?
Maine Emergency Management Association, yes.
It's still listed. It's in the, it's in the legislature to be considered.
Considered.
But it's under Maine Emergency Management. It is still mandatory.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to see because I know when we brought this up...
Sure, I wasn't sure what exactly the question was, but yeah, it is available, absolutely.
Okay, I just, we brought it up when the governor kind of rescinded something that was going to court with the state, and I thought that reversed everything.
It's not finished. Yeah, it's still in there.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, it's like anything else. It's an ongoing discussion, so I...
Thank you.
I appreciate you asking the questions. I think we've...
No problem. Thank you.
Squared it up, yeah. I can move on to Treasurer.
That would be fine.
Okay.
Does anyone have any other questions for Eric?
Okay. Check grant conciliation was completed through July 31st of 2021. Our accounts are in balance with our statements, and all bank activity appear to be normal. We continue to work on implementing the new account structure. We find issues as we go, but again, Teresa's been great. We have had to do some creative tracking and reporting with revenues that normally would be under a revenue account are showing up in a general ledger account, things like that. So we have to kind of follow that a little bit more closely, but we're getting there. And then in early August, Teresa met with one of our auditors to really understand the flow more fully and prepare sample transactions because one of the things we have to do is be prepared for what happens when we get grant funds. How do we move that through the accounting system to make it as clear as possible and make sure it ends up in the right spot? And so she met with them to make sure we were ready to do that when the time came and to correct a few things that we didn't get quite right the first time, but that's expected. So moving on to investments. Also in early August, we did proceed with investing in CDs and SEDARs, which are the certificates of deposit. SEDARs are just essentially an aggregate of various CDs, so you can keep a larger pot of money broken up into little chunks so that it's all under the FDIC insurance threshold of $250,000. So we have three different investments right now coming due at different times, and this will ensure that we have a stable cash flow, but we also are able to reap the benefits of some of these record-high interest rates that we're seeing. So we have one 15-month SEDAR for $250,000 at 4.85. We will yield $15,000 and change out of that. We have a six-month SEDAR for $500,000 at 5%, and that will yield $12,000 and change. And then a 12-month SEDAR for $250,000, 4.6%, and $11,005. So fairly handsome returns considering we hadn't been investing prior. We'd just been getting whatever our bank was giving us for a rate, which was anywhere between a quarter to a half of a percent. So this is a vast improvement and a good, a good thing for our town to be doing. The fact that these things are staggered again will help. I do want to look at the possibility of a fourth tier so that we could have some kind of maturity cycle that gave us every three months. But we'll talk about more, more about that as things progress. And I'm just excited to get this underway, see how it works out with minimal risk. So I think that we're in a good spot. And yeah, Andrew Skogan Bank is our standard. We have multiple accounts with them, so it's a good place for us to start. And then moving on to financial reporting. I will be revising our Treasurer's Report. We've had this kind of old model of looking at year-to-date and month-to-date, and that doesn't always show what I'd like or the way I'd like to show it. I think it's more valuable to talk about other measures with the Select Board and the public so that people can understand, well, jeez, what's really happening? How's our financial position really look like? And so I'll be revising that report in conjunction with some of these accounting changes that we've started to implement. So basically, we're looking at about 8% expanded or revenue coming in for the year-to-date. As always, there's variability. Being the first month of the year, there's pretty significant variability. So there's nothing really that stands out other than the purchase of the fire truck. That makes a lot of things look wonky because we have something like a 2,000% increase in one line relative to the, this time last year, things like that. But that is, as I noted, in process. We've cut the check and will be reimbursed through the bond proceeds that we get in November. Then half of those proceeds will go to reimburse our general fund, and the other half will go to, we'll offset that debt, so roughly. Any questions on the Treasurer's Report?
No, I'd just like to make a comment that one of the things that Shaun and Eric and I discussed in our planning meeting was revising this so that when Eric says that we should be at about 8% without seeing what the budget is, we have no way to compare what the numbers are for the month to what the budget would be. So it will be more useful to be able to see that so that we can make comparisons. And not just that, it's just showing the evidence there so it's more transparent so that people don't have to go look somewhere else to compare something. So thank you for being willing to do that, Eric.
My pleasure.
Okay. Let me just get down below the... Oh, don't do that to me. Soon as I can scroll out of the financials, we'll be moving on.
I think we're appointments and reappointments.
Yes.
For public communication.
Oh, that's right, we have public communications for us, too. Sorry.
I just have to get there. A lot of pages of the finances there.
Yeah, it was a heavy, it was a heavy one.
Okay. So now is the time for board committees and commissions and departments, and we do have committee meeting minutes. So thank you very much to the Age Friendly Committee for your meeting minutes of July 12th, for the Board of Appeals from December 5th, from the Rec Committee from August, the Trails Committee in April, and from the Library Board of Trustees from July 2022 through April of 2023. So thank you all very much for bringing those forward. I think this is just showing that we need to do something different with the committee chairs and secretaries to let them know that we need to have minutes, as the board policy states, within a week of when the meeting's held and not 13 months later, although we appreciate getting them eventually. But the idea is to let the public know what has been going on in these committees so that the public can participate if they wish. And seeing something that happened a year ago isn't nearly as useful as something that happened last month. So we'll have to devise a way, if any of the board members have suggestions or anyone in the public, for ways that we can help these committees to be able to meet that goal. That would be useful for all of us. The next item is public communication. So this is time for members of the public, both in person and online, to address the board. This would be time for items that are not already on the agenda. So if you are here for something that's going to be taking place, we'll discuss that and have public comment during that time period. So is there anybody in person who has something they'd like to make a comment for? Is there anyone online who would like to make any comment about something that's not on the agenda? There's a lot of lag in that picture. Okay.
Don't look at it.
I know. It's like 30 seconds, and then my head moves. Very weird. All right, then we'll move on to appointments, reappointments, and resignations. We have 45 minutes set aside for this time. We will start with applicants for the RSU 38 School Board, and then we'll move on to the Board of Appeals and then to the Library Board and conclude with the Fairgrounds Working Group. So we've got a lot of people to cover here tonight. So the format that we had laid out and Eric had advised to all of the applicants for the school board, the school committee position that became available because of the resignation of a member, was that we would entertain a time for each applicant to come to the podium and have up to three minutes to present themselves and their experience and why they should be considered for this position. And then we will have time for the Select Board to ask questions of the applicants, and then we'll have a motion. We are considering four people for one position. This is an appointment, so the motion that's made here will be the final disposition of this application tonight. This position ends at the time...
The next election.
Of the next election, which will be at the town meeting in June. So this is just filling in a position that's currently vacant. Would it be the pleasure of the board to ask questions of the applicants as they are at the podium or to have them all speak and then ask questions afterwards?
I think while they're there makes best sense.
While they're there? Okay, so we'll allow you up to about three and for about seven minutes to be at the podium to say something if you wish to and to have Select Board members ask you questions. And we're going in alphabetical order by last name, so there's absolutely no favoritism given, so we'll start with Chris Alvarado.
Catherine, just one quick note before Chris takes the, or go ahead and Chris go up.
Oh, yes.
This is a, just procedures. Feel free. I just wanted to point out that what Dave had been asking about, how do we review people? How do we base our decisions? So one thing I had done for the board packet, and I'll be doing this going forward, so thanks for the suggestion, Dave, is to include the, basically the summary of the purpose of the different groups, whether it's the Appeals Board or the School Board, in the Select Board packets so that can give you some idea of what criteria we might be using based on the, you know, the purpose and the goals of those boards, committees, and the RSU Board is the first one. So I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you, Eric. Chris, take it away.
Great. Hi, my name is Chris Alvarado. I've lived here in Reed Field for over a dozen years over on Gordon Road. We own a home there. I have four kids, one of whom is currently in the school system, two of whom graduated. And my other son graduated just now from Kansas Hill, so he's been in the area. I was inspired to run for school board in the 2022 election. In fact, I will summarize what I said extensively during the candidate night, which is available on video. During that presentation, I tried to put forth the idea that my integrated vision, if you will, of how we should approach the next few years is to really focus like a laser on helping our kids overcome the obstacles that were put in their path over the last few years. I think that most people will agree that the demographic that suffered the most from what happened in the pandemic was our children. School scores went down. They couldn't meet their friends. They couldn't do after-school stuff. And I think we have a moral obligation to try to rectify that. The kids who are most disadvantaged were the ones who are most hurt. And so I think we have two possibilities for doing that. One is to take advantage of what I would call our hardware, our beautiful physical location. I think we should aggressively try to expand summer programs. I note the comment that was made before about Heritage Days and how, you know, we've never seen the beach that busy before. And maybe the question should be, well, why not? You know, why don't we use that beach and all of our outdoor facilities in the summertime to have enhancement programs, not only for the vulnerable kids, but for the gifted kids? And I think that leads into the second idea that our... And, and I think that leads into the second idea that our software we should make better use of. If we expand programs like that, we invite opportunities for, say, kids who are interested in becoming teachers. And we should, you know, try to mentor that and cultivate that because those teachers, those kids will become our teachers of the next generation. You know, they can have opportunities to teach the little ones in summer or teach the little ones during school. And older kids can start internships. We can also make use of the, the vast amount of experience in our elder community by just having things like, well, how to fix a tire or a, a short course on financial literacy. You know, things like that, that we can use to, we can make use of all the experience we have in our community. The last statement I would make about my particular reason for running and what I think I can contribute is, is diversity, frankly. I think we all understand that it's important to have people who look different and sound different. And most importantly, think different, because what we really are trying to achieve with diversity of appearance is actually a diversity of thought. If you'll recall, a couple of decades back, there was a great book written about President Lincoln's leadership style called Team of Rivals. And during the Civil War, President Lincoln purposefully took people who disagreed with him passionately so that he could get their perspective, because he understood that by getting many different perspectives, even those that disagree violently, well, not violently, but disagree passionately, you know, will, will head towards a consensus that's the most constructive solution for how to go forward. So I, I think I can contribute that. I've had a lot of experience in the past with starting programs. And in particular, I was a parent representative of the Maine School of Science and Mathematics recently. And so I've had experience with strategic vision for, for schools in that sense. And, and I think last thing I would say is another comment that I made at the candidate's night that I would promise to be responsive to constituents. I think that one of the frustrations I felt over the past year, frankly, is, is a significant lack of responsiveness on the part of elected officials. I've had to file FOIA requests in order to get information that really should have been, according to the ombudsman for the Attorney General, given right away. And I think we need to break free of some groupthink that is, is, is taking over in some of our entities. And I think the only way that we can do that is by having opinions that challenge so that we can have debate that will foster compromise. So I hope that you'll consider my application. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the board have questions for Chris?
Chris, I'll ask a question. I'm just curious, outside of this, the STEM group, what, what your experience with education is and, and working with the kids direct outside of your own children?
Oh, well, you know, I, I actually have a pretty long experience with that. When I was in college, I was identified as a disadvantaged student before I went to school. I came from a high school that had never sent a student to the college I went to before. And the college that I went to was a Quaker community and, and they really were borrowing my inspiration. They had a program for kids to come and get oriented to the school and make friends and, you know, take some sort of light courses to kind of understand what the rigors of the college would be like compared to where they were coming. And, and that was incredibly helpful. And, and, and I've tried to replicate that. I was in college a counselor for that. When I went to medical school, I participated in a very similar program at NYU. When I was in my residency, I, I made a special effort to deal with underprivileged communities in New York City because that's what our hospital focused on. And so, you know, I, I spent my entire life doing things like that and, and trying to mentor kids, you know, especially from disadvantaged groups to get into, you know, better residencies and things like that in the medical sphere where I was, I was most involved as adults.
Do we want to ask any members of the public if they have questions or comments?
No.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Okay, our next person up would be Patricia Clark.
Hi, I'm Patricia Clark and I live at 417 North Road in Reed Field. And I am retiring, well, I'm sort of trying to get out the door. And I'm really interested in education. I've been a teacher for over 40 years and different grades and ages. I have taught everything from pre-K to elementary school, kindergarten, middle school, language arts. And I'm now teaching college students at the University of Maine and Augusta. I've also had experience with being a director of different programs. The first one was when we designed a, one of the first all-day kindergartens. I know that I'm aging, totally aging myself, in Maine with Head Start in Pajefka, Maine. And we were able to partner with them and bring over the, some of their staff so that we could help parents as well as students transition to a, a larger school. Because this, they were transitioning from Head Start to a school that had 2,000 kids. So we wanted to make it relations, we wanted to make those relationships before they were, got, get into school. And I've been the, the director of early childhood studies at UMA for the past 15 years. And that's been an ideal job because I get to, to be part education and part mental health and human services. And you can't really separate mental health from education, but most teachers don't get necessarily, unless they're encouraged to take courses like that. And you really need, especially now, you need that mental health background or some at least. And there's, they are only required to take one exceptionality course, which is not necessarily enough for special ed. Because early intervention is, is key in helping kids. And that's why I tried to get the playgroup, the Reed Field Playgroup started again. And Eric was instrumental in doing that. You saw that grade hurdle. And so we've got the kids in the school who are six months to four years old. And so they're getting acquainted with their school, what's going to be their school. And that is exciting. And volunteering has been a, a family affair. My parents volunteered. I volunteered. My husband volunteers. And I hope you'll consider my application.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the select board members?
I've read all of your packets and so I know that you have some other experiences beside what you mentioned. But I thought maybe people online and people in the public might like to hear just, what would you say would be, you do have extensive experience in education. Can you list one more thing that you feel was out of your work that would really stand out? Made a big impact or was significant to you?
I mean, besides designing.
Besides what was on your resume. I mean, I, we've read your resume, right? But the people in the public had not. And so I just was curious if you, if there's another thing that just really stood out for you as something that's really impactful for you or for your students?
Well, I've been able to do research in different countries as far as early childhood education and education period. And that's been, that's been really, really interesting as well as it's changed my outlook on different things. And I've been able to bring it into the classroom to, in, in some cases workshops and in other cases, just share with them, you know, my pictures and short videos. And, and had, when I was a Head Start fellow in Washington DC, that was huge. Well, just living in Washington DC was huge. But being able to see how the government works, or in some cases, not so well, was, it, it opened my eyes to different possibilities. And I've shared that with Head Start. And I'm currently, you know, on the board at SKCDC.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Anyone else? Oh, no, you're fine. I just want to make sure we aren't, we're giving everyone their fair chance. Okay, thank you. And next we will move to Samantha Horn.
Hello, I'm Samantha Horn. I live at 46 P Ridge Road. Been there since 2004. Two kids, I have two kids, they've both been through the schools. The last one graduated in June. I'm very excited. The oldest one even has his own apartment. It's like, you know, it's a whole new world. I was on the school board from 2013 to 2016. I was vice chair there, I think at the time was co-chair the second year and then the chair my third year. And I have a, I'm self-employed. I have a small consulting company now. But for a long time I worked in administration, government, and then a little bit nonprofit sector. So I have some budget experience even beyond the school board. I've done some volunteering in the schools, certainly tried to follow along and help as my kids went through the schools. But I think fundamentally, what I hope I brought to the school board in the past and what I would hope to bring to it again is just the ability to really listen carefully, ask a lot of good questions, insist on transparency, foster open communication and really work so that we're discussing issues in an open, fair way so that all voices can be heard and there's a good, solid basis for any decision making that happens. I mean, the board supervises the superintendent, sets policy, sets the budget. I mean, those are all the fundamentals, both for fiscal health for the town, educational health and mental health for our kids, support for the staff that are working so hard in the schools. And so that sense of trying to be there to set aside any preconceived notions, listen really well and make sure everyone has a chance to contribute is sort of a fundamental purpose, I think, behind being a board member. When this opening came up, a couple of members of the community spoke to me about it. And you have such a great mix of skills in front of you with this applicant pool. I mean, there's just really a rainbow of folks who could help in this regard. So it's a short appointment time, you know, it's less than a year. If my prior board service and sort of general approach can be helpful to you, I would be more than happy to spend the time to do that for you and for the town and for the kids and for the staff. If a different person's skillset is what's really needed right now, I'll have a lot more free time and that would be okay too. I wish we could all be on the board together because there's such a great skillset here. And we all bring such different things to the application process. So I'm, I'm happy to go into more detail about any of the things that are in the one page that I wrote. But I figured you probably all read it because I know most of you and you're thorough. If there's something I can answer for you to elaborate on any of that, I'm very happy to.
Yes, Carol?
I have a question. So Samantha, if you did get appointed, it is a short, like I think 10-month assignment. Are you interested in running for election the next time around and serving longer?
I think it really depends a lot on whether the need is there. It's not out of the question. I certainly would consider continuing. I hope that it can be an environment where people work well together and that serving is really a positive experience and I would, would work to make it so. And, and it also depends on who the other candidates that would like to run are. So if, if I am still interested in running, but there's another candidate who's really enthusiastic and has a ton of time and has, you know, maybe has kids in the school or has special knowledge, I don't need to be the one that runs next year if there's a better candidate there. So I really am mostly interested in what's good for the board in the long run.
Any other board members? Thank you.
Thank you.
And then our fourth candidate is Lydia Lineback. It does not pay to have a last name at the end of the alphabet. Well, you're right in the middle though. How can this happen?
Just a budget early alphabet.
I prepared something to read because I am not a great public speaker of the cup. So I am Lydia Lineback. I live at 126 Old Kent Hill Road, just up the top of the hill. And you all already have my qualifications, so I'll be brief. I've been a resident of Reed Field for 25 years and have three vibrant children who attended Marana Cook Schools. And through those children, they provided me ample opportunities to meet all of their children and the administrators of all three schools. I also spent 23 years in public education at all levels, K through 12, as either a teacher or a technology integrationist. Although we might have differing ideas of how things should be done, all four of us speaking with you tonight share one goal and that is to continue to improve the educational system in our community. You can't have improvement without change and it's the role of the school board to help guide both the educational and at-large communities through those changes. Some will be small and easy, others will be seismic. I've been through a number of those changes in my time as a teacher and leader. And as a result, I've learned what works to facilitate change and what can derail it. And that is experience I can bring to the board. I've also learned a lot from people's resistance to change and how that resistance can and should be used to inform our decision-making. I collaborate well with others and strive to listen more than I speak. And on that note, I'll finish. I hope you find my skills and qualifications meet the needs of the position and I look forward to answering any questions that you have.
Thank you.
I think I have one specific one because one of the things that I, I saw in your writing, you mentioned it just now, is that you are very interested in the process of change and how to facilitate it. Maybe just one or two examples of what you think is some of the most, things that are most critical in helping to bring about effective change in organizations, especially educational?
Sure. So I'll use an example that happened in my own experience. So as part of RSU 2, we went, we made a seismic change from a traditional teaching and grading system to a standards-based system that really turned everything on its head. It took, it was something that parents had no frame of reference for whatsoever. And the way we did that change really didn't do us any favors because we were sort of, we decided what we wanted to do and we told the community what we were going to do. And then when they started asking questions, we didn't always have the answers as to why this was a good idea, what the problem was that we were fixing, where was the data that showed that this would actually work. And we had a number of parents who came to meetings very well armed with questions that frequently we couldn't answer. And had we said, well, they don't understand the system and they don't know what they're talking about and just continued ahead, we would have lost an entire community. But what they did was they backed up a little bit and they listened to the people that had resistance and found that many times they had ideas that filled holes we hadn't thought about. Sometimes we saw that people were resistant because they had fear. And when we talked to them about what their fears were, because they love their kids, they want their kids to be successful, they don't want them to be guinea pigs, we were able to find out what information they needed and what changes we might need to make as we implemented this process that made it easier for everyone. So I, I agree with Samantha that, and, and also with Chris, that we need to listen to the people that disagree with us because they're not wrong. They may see things differently, but they very often have the information that we need to be able to move forward more effectively.
Anyone else, Carol?
So the grading system you just referred to. So that was away from A, B, C, D to?
Yes. Yeah, it was on a one through four scale.
And you guys didn't implement that successfully?
Anyone else from the board? Okay, thank you. Is there actually a hand raised bill or is that just a cursor over? Okay.
You couldn't see that either.
Didn't want to put anybody on the spot there. Okay. So now would be the time for board discussion and to entertain a motion. I don't know if you have any discussion or if anyone's ready to make a motion, whatever is the pleasure.
I want to make a motion to ask them all to agree to like, take turns running in the next like four school board elections. We, we've had so many times when we just haven't had like very many candidates or write-in candidates. And, and like now we have four really good ones all at the same time. For a 10-month, you know, appointment. So I, I probably can't make a motion that, to do that. But that's my, that's my first comment.
You could appeal to their good nature, Steve.
That's true. He just did.
I think one of the things to consider, maybe as Chris said and Lydia did as well, diversity amongst the committee is how you get things done to me. Because if you put all the same people from the same walks of life on a committee, then you might as well just put one of them there in a sense, if you get the same perspectives. So I think we should consider. So I think we should consider who our school Board members are now and how we can better diversify that with one of these awesome candidates. Because, I mean, how do you pick? We've got, couldn't get four better candidates for the school board.
This is Sean. Dave, I'm with you. I think that was one of the things that I did over the weekend, too, was really looking at our Board, or actually 38 Board, and who's there right now and what sort of roles do they have in the community in their own lives? Because it's hard. This is horrible. This is a really, the last two meetings, we've had some really weird decisions that I've not had, you know, try to choose people out of that group. And so that's how I kind of, before meeting and hearing individually, was where my decision-making process went over the weekend, you know, before we heard people, so. Yeah.
But fortunately, there is a body that makes these decisions. So that's how we keep society rolling along, and it is our hard job to do that. So whether we realized that when we ran for election to this Board or not, here we are. And so I need to entertain a motion for a candidate. And then we'll see if it's seconded and where we proceed.
I'll make, oh, go ahead.
No, you go.
I'm going to make a motion, but I really want to thank all four of you again before I do because it is not a personal thing, it's just my process. And so I'd make a motion to, like, Patricia Clark to the School Board for the term serving through June 2024.
Is there a second? I'll second it.
Yeah. Hold me second, that just opens it to discussion, too, right?
Correct. If there's no second, then the motion just doesn't exist.
Right.
So now we have a motion and a second, so it's time for discussion, and then we'll have a vote.
And so can we, we can discuss all aspects of this, of course, during this discussion. Does that be just about Patricia, right? Is that true or not true?
I think it's probably discuss the broader issue. Because, I mean, you can't compartmentalize this thing.
Because we all.
But I would just ask that any discussion we have be critical but not negative.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
It's going to be hard to be negative. But I, one of the things, I did this, a similar thing to Sean, where we can just, like, really look hard at what's on the Board and also the fact that it's a 10-month appointment, you know? And I think that one of the hardest things, I mean, I don't know about you, Dave, but, you know, my first, like, six months on the Select Board, I felt like fish out of water, you know? It's like, oh, Catherine's like, "Well, this is how we do it". Oh, really? What do you know? So I'm actually wondering if it might be good that, to ask Samantha to be the candidate that we would select because of that reason, that the learning curve is just shorter. And then encourage, you know, because she already said if there's other good candidates who want to take her place at the end of 10 months, then I would encourage these folks to run then. But that's my, that's the only thing I'd add to the discussion at this point. I wondered about that, the fact that you have that learning curve. And could we make that an easier thing for someone on the Board for a short time?
I was thinking that same way. Because Samantha, in fact, I was on the School Board years ago, and then I attended several meetings where she was on and she was very balanced and well-thought, her comments. And she was the one candidate that I saw that talked about budget. And because we know the school in the RSU is such a giant part, 80, 75, 80%, or maybe more, of our whole tax base, I liked seeing that. But Patricia, I think you said, did you have some budgeting? I mean, you had such vast experience. Now I'm thinking you also had that? And maybe Lydia has as well as RSU?
So just because folks are not at the microphone, comments from the audience were that Patricia does have some experience with budgeting, and Lydia says that's a shorter spot for her.
So it probably seems, people are probably thinking, when we're talking about, you're talking about differences of opinion and we're talking about school boards, so surely someone with an education experience like Patricia doesn't make sense. But when you look at everybody else on that Board, they're not teachers. They don't have that education experience. And sometimes I think that's part of what's missing, that advocate for that continued learning, for the head start, for the young programs, for the mindfulness. Thank you for mentioning the mental health piece. It's something that, for sure, the last three years, Chris even alerted to it, that we've seen a lot of changes in mental health for youth. And that's the aspect I went with. I think although it is for a school position, somebody with the most experience with school seems to be the diverse candidate for that position, just to clarify.
Looking at the makeup of the Board we have at this time.
Look at the current Board.
The Reed Field Board.
You can go, you can go further than the Reed Field if you want, but just Reed Field.
But since we're the Reed Field Select Board making a Reed Field appointment, I think it's wider.
Of our four positions, none of them are teachers or have that education experience.
Did I get the wrong list that was on there? Who do we have?
We have Rebecca Lambert, Sean Roderick, Brian Tarbuck.
Okay, and Brian.
And I think another point is people that have had kids in our school system that's familiar with the school system. I think definitely all three of you have. And Patricia, it looks, sounds like you've worked with many of them. Somebody said they know all the, maybe it was you, Lydia, all the principals and teachers. And have you worked in the RSU here?
I have worked here.
Okay.
A lot of work for free.
But she, she's run the playgroup, she's run the playgroup at the Reed Field Elementary School for several years.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Any further discussion on this particular motion?
It's another good point, Sean. Thank you.
It's not fun. I'm going to say that again.
Okay, then I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? I'm not pausing to make you do something. Okay.
Boy, I already got three.
Okay, so was that everyone? Okay, so we have, we have five. So that is unanimous. So the position is going to be filled for the next 10 months by Patricia Clark. Did I get the right name? Yes, you, okay.
Very serious about.
Thank you to everyone for your applications. And I wholeheartedly agree with Steve that we'd love to see any or all of you run for the School Board in the future. The community needs people like you, so thank you very much. And you are free to leave unless you have a dying interest in staying for the future agenda items.
Go quick.
Okay. Is there any paperwork that Patricia needs to do?
Not on our end. On our end, we just have the appointment form, which I will pass along.
Okay, so I guess we don't have anything to do with the typical election of a School Board.
But thanks again to all four of you, very much.
Thank you.
Very, very much.
Okay, we'll move on, and we are right on time. Amazing, everybody. Great work. We're going to consider, we're going to consider the appointment of applicants to the Board of Appeals. We have Bruce Burgoyne, Les Priest, and Al Prizunka. At this point in time, we have received a withdrawal from Bruce Burgoyne. He no longer wishes to be considered for this position because he stated there are two very capable candidates, and he did not want to get in the way of those folks being appointed.
He won't, but I will say that we do actually have a new opening as of Tuesday.
Friday, right?
No.
Hallelujah.
Tuesday or Wednesday of last week, Nate Rudy submitted his resignation. He's taking a job out of country, I believe. And so we now have another opening on the Appeals Board, so.
With only two candidates?
No, then there'll be, so Bruce would probably, Bruce said he could leave his application in if there was a future vacancy.
But I just wanted to make the point and say it publicly that we will have a vacancy on the Appeals Board. So if anybody else would like to apply, don't, don't, this is not a fait accompli.
It will be advertised.
It'll be advertised.
And considered at our next meeting, I'm sure. So at this time, we have applications from Les Priest and Al Prizunka, and I just have to get a little bit farther down. Les, this is a first-time appointment, so if you could come to the podium, please, and introduce yourself, and if you want to say a few words, that would be fine. And if not, that's okay, we'll ask them for you.
Yes, my name is Les Priest. I live in Reed Field on Torsy Shores Road. I've been a resident of Reed Field for almost 40 years and had a lot of different things going on in my life of that, my work life. And I think I can probably share some of that and maybe use that in the Appeals Board process. So I would like to be considered as a candidate.
Anyone have any questions for Al or comments? Les, sorry. Al's next. I'd just like to thank you for coming forward to do this. A first-time appointment after all those years of being in town, that's a big step, and really appreciate it because it, as we've talked about already tonight, having diversity is a really good thing. And I think a lot of us, as we get older, realize that we do have enough time that we can contribute in a different way, maybe, to what's going on around us, so. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I just have a quick, Carol, I keep doing that to you tonight. I'm sorry.
Go ahead. We'll go Carol first this time.
Okay. I just want to say I've served with Les on many things, and he has been in a lot of committees, and he's the most tactful human being, just genuine, attacks, you know, not attacks, but he looks at a problem and is very creative in solving it. And with his knowledge of the real estate and the prices and what affects property and who was there before and what, you know, improvements helps. I mean, it's just going to be a really interesting mix to the Appeals Board, I think, and very important one. So thank you, Les, for.
Thank you. And I did not pay her.
I just have a quick question. Is there any conflict of interest with being on the Appeals Board and selling real estate in Reed Field? Or for Reed Field, that type thing?
Nothing inherent.
Okay.
Nothing inherent. I mean, there could be an opportunity. Well, I actually talked to Les about this before because Les, in the past, has done a good job helping us manage tax-acquired properties.
Right.
He would not be able to continue doing that. Somebody from his office may. But that's the only thing that I saw, and I did address that with Les, and he's fully aware and still wants to help, so.
Perfect. I just wanted to make sure we were good that way.
Good question. Good question.
Great. Thank you very much, Les. And then our next candidate is Al Prizunka. I bet you know the drill, Al, since you've been on the Select Board a long time.
Things have changed, remarkably. We met downstairs.
Oh, yes.
Wow. Yeah. I was here when the addition was put on. When I was called by state police at 2:00 in the morning to come down and see if people broke in or not. It was just dust from the construction that landed on some of the sensors, but.
Do you remember what year that was?
I, you know.
Time period? Because I, we were trying to talk about this the other night at a meeting.
I have to go back and look at my resume, which I didn't give you, but. So, yes, I'm Al Prizunka. I've been a resident of Reed Field for 30-plus years. I live on 71 Old Kents Hill Road, just up there. And I'll just go over the things, I think, which are germane to this position. Yes, I was select person now. I was select person for six years, two of which I was Chair. I guess the highlights of my tenure were the conversations we had with Wayne when they joined the transfer station. And we had, actually during that period, we had, I think we were best in recycling in the state, the best rates at that point in time. I also was involved in the bearing of the tires issue, which I don't know if any of you even know about, remember, but a little embarrassing for me since at that point. My other experience was I was with the Maine Department of Environmental Protection for 20 years. First 10, I dealt with non-point pollution, which is agricultural enough, silvicultural enough, construction, all that, and water quality. It's also involved with departmental policy issues. And then the last 10 years, I was the Bureau Director. The Bureau handled hazardous waste, solid waste, oil spills, underground tank leaks, radioactive waste, all that really nasty stuff. And then, so then I went on a second career, actually. I've been dealing with healthcare data for the last 25 years, 10 of which were with Maine State Government and 15 were with a private sector company. Not that that really relates necessarily to the Appeals Board. And also, I was Code Enforcement Officer in Mount Vernon for about a year or so until I got in an argument with the Chair of the Select Board, which had to do with, I said, "Look, you know, you're supposed to follow your ordinances. I mean, it's not, you can't just do whatever you want to do", which you wanted me to do something, but I said, "No, I'm done". But I guess I think I'm pretty reasonable. Actually, I actually remember a case, so the Appeals Board came to the Board of Selectmen. Well, they denied an appeal, and the impacted party had attorney. They came and to show how reasonable I am. It had to do with a foundation or slab of a garage that was put in place. It was a new development at the time off of the Plains Road. And it was about, probably if I remember correctly, a foot or a little bit more into the right-of-way of the road, the road that served all the homes in the, well, to be the lots and the homes in that subdivision. And I went back and forth, and it was not, it was, you know, the contractor's fault, so what do you do? So, you know, what are you going to have them rip it all up? And I said, "Well, look, it's a new subdivision, it's a new gravel road", so if the contractor, just you with your equipment, move the road over two feet, just swing by the garage, the slab, I said, and that was it. So just want to say I'm reasonable, even though I work for the DEP and some people think the DEP is unreasonable. I guess, I guess that's probably a, I'm a gentleman farmer, didn't mention that. I have too many blueberry bushes for an individual household and too few to go into commercial business, actually.
So you need more neighbors.
Yeah. Well, I said, "Come on over", and I hate to let them go the ways, but I guess that's enough.
Well, thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from the Board?
Carol? I just like, I'm very happy there's two positions. This would have been very hard, and it's really nice to get you coming back and just a diverse number of people that, you know, new perspective, so thank you both.
And I'm about to be, I should say, I'm about to be fully retired, too. That's the other thing.
Yay.
So that's, I got time, I got time. Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
So they might, the gentlemen might want to speak again, but we have one opening that is through 2025, one that's through 2026.
Oh.
So one is two years, one's three years.
Oh.
So.
Both said three years on the applications, so that's not correct.
Well, no, because they have both looked for the.
For the three-year.
And Kristin may have just put that on there, but we have one for two years and one for three years.
So I guess if either of you is more willing to take the two-year or the three-year, if you'd like to offer that up, otherwise we'll just at random choose.
There you go.
I would love to see a rock, paper, scissors, best of three, okay?
So Al for the three?
Oh, Al's doing three.
Okay, who's going to do the motion?
I thought you were going to rock, paper, scissors.
Do you regret telling us you're about retired now, Al?
So I'll make a motion to approve Al to the Appeals Board for a period starting today through June 30th, 2026.
Correct.
Correct.
And?
And to appoint Les Priest to the Appeals Board for a period lasting today through June 30th, 2025.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, it is unanimous. Thank you both very much.
Thank you, guys.
And they need to see somebody downstairs or not?
Yes. Appeals Board members do need to get sworn in, so make sure you get sworn in. We also need to have you do Freedom of Access training because the records that you review and handle oftentimes are subject to Freedom of Access requests. So that's a state law requirement as well. So really easy program. It actually helps you communicate better, and it's all good stuff.
And that's anytime the Town Office is open and they would see Kristin Park?
Correct.
Okay. Great.
Wow, thank you.
Wow, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item of business is to consider calling applicants to the library board, Chris Olson and Rick Wilson. And let me flip ahead to those.
I'll just jump in real quickly here and say that we, two very good applicants. Rick Wilson has had an application on file since last year. David once asked about, you know, Q, if that makes a difference or not. It may or may not, it's up to you guys, but I just wanted to make that point, that we had had a prior application that was held because there wasn't a vacancy. He did reapply. Rick is, unless he's here, so he wouldn't be available, unless perhaps on Zoom. I can't tell. But in any event, I'd say he wouldn't be available tonight, more than likely.
And this is for one position, is that correct?
For one position on the library board. But again, I include the qualifications or the purpose and, you know, charge of the library board. So you can look at their qualifications and experience and weigh that against the qualifications that would be needed to fulfill that function.
Thank you. And has Rick served on committees before?
I'd have to look.
Because the online doesn't say if it's a first time appointment or not. But while you're doing that, it's a first time appointment for Christine Olson, so if you'd like to come to the podium, Chris?
Yes. And I think that I probably owe you some detailed qualifications, because I, I, I don't know, I just, I filled this out. I saw there was an opening, and I have a huge interest in the library, so I applied. But I can certainly talk about my experience and.
Yeah, absolutely, go for it.
Okay. Well, for twenty-five years, I was a manager in the, at the Department of Transportation. I oversaw water, all groundwater, surface water, hazardous waste, and solid waste. So I had a pretty expansive group of people who worked for me. I, I organized and wrote, helped write a best management practices manual, so that people working in the field, you know, building roads and stuff, could see, we built a simple manual so that they would protect water quality. I drilled wells for people when we'd blow them up at DOT.
Wow.
I was in charge of all that. So I had, I had a lot of things I was doing. I was also very interested in, you know, I was one of the first women technical people at DOT. So I was pretty aware of how things were going. So I, as far as how people were being managed. And I started a employee recognition program. I like to, I like to actually initiate programs. In fact, towards the end of my time in the environmental office, I, I really started noticing how a lot of the maintenance people work on bridges, they would work on road sides, they'd work in ditches. And I came to realize that we didn't have a training program. Like, some people, if they were in a region where someone said, "Oh, you need to get scaffolding training to do that," then they, they might get it. But somebody over in Ellsworth may never get it. So I, I stopped working for the environmental office to go out and interview everyone and figure out a training program for the Department of Transportation for every single job that we had. So then, the department gave me the, the maintenance facility up in Fairfield to start a training center. So that was the last five years I started up a training center. And it was really fun. I, so I, I guess I really liked to do, and that's part of why, I, for five years, I was on the planning board in Winthrop. That was, I think, about a hundred years ago. It was in the nineteen-eighties. And since that time, I had family and full-time jobs. I, I wasn't doing much public service. So now I'm retired, although I am a printmaker. I, I am an artist at the Circling the Square Press in Gardner now. I just, you know, I use the library, I, I coordinate. Melissa started a program where for years, our book club, we'd be scrambling to buy books, and she started a program where, it's not like in her library where you could go to New Hampshire, it's just Maine. And so we get, I coordinate with her to get all the books that we need to read. And it's just worked so well, and, and I've just come to appreciate the programs that she starts. She's, she's very hands-on, she's, so anyway, when I saw that there was an opening on the board, I thought, you know, I could do that. I would love to help her out. I'd love to do it for the community. I'd love to help her out. I, I can, you know, I have a science background and art, I'm an artist now. I don't know. I, I've put programs together. I'm a doer. So I thought, okay, it's my time to, to help out. That five years on the planning board, I really didn't know if I'd ever volunteer. It was in the nineteen-eighties, and everyone was developing, and it was really tough. So, the library thing, just, I don't know, it just.
Sounds better.
It sounded so fun, and, you know, just, I love the programs, I'd love to participate.
Well, thank you. That was entertaining as well as informative.
Thank you. I was so, yeah, I'm sorry, I really should have been more detailed, but I didn't realize that, you know, you, what level of knowledge, you know, that you wouldn't want me to write about, so.
Well, whatever you were interested in sharing, and I think that was awesome.
Okay.
Anybody have any comments or questions?
Okay.
So we had, go ahead, Dave.
Is there any, did anybody hear from Rick? Is there any reason that?
He's still interested, he's just, he's just not available. But I do want to say, I mean, I really appreciate what you said about wanting to join the library board, because they're doing great things, and you can see yourself being a part of that. To me, that's what all the, every town committee should be, that we're doing such good work and doing so many wonderful things and, you know, making an impact positively. I think I just really enjoyed hearing that, so thanks for that feedback, because it confirms what we kind of all know, that we've got a great librarian and a great board.
Yes.
I'm on the library board.
And you sold it really, really well, especially in making the comparison, the planning board. Can I come sign tonight and get, and be appointed to the library the next vacancy? Is that a possibility?
No, of course she'll trade with you.
I would entertain a motion.
I would nominate Chris Olson. I would make a motion to nominate Chris Olson.
To appoint.
To appoint Chris Olson for the library board.
For a term?
Of three years.
Beginning?
Beginning, oh boy, see, David. Beginning, is it June twentieth?
Today.
Oh, today, okay.
June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five.
That just.
The June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five.
That's exactly what I was going to say. Okay, perfect, yeah.
That's why I let you do it. I'll, I'll second that, Steve.
Never let it be said, this isn't a teaching environment. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, go ahead, Carol.
My only thing was, Rick has had a longstanding interest in the library, and I'm not sure what his conflict was tonight. That's my only thing. And Christine is already a volunteer there. I, I think they're both fabulous, so I don't think we can lose either way. That's my only thing, is Rick put his thing in quite a very long time ago, but that's whatever you guys decide.
I agree with what you're saying, but if she's here.
They're both good.
She's interviewing, then I would say we have to go with that.
Sometimes that's what it takes.
Yep.
Okay. And with that, all in favor? Unanimous.
The best part of that was you were surprised.
Okay, so we will move on now to the next item. And Chris, as with everyone else, you're welcome to stay or to leave. No insult taken if you leave. We're going to consider some changes to the appointment structure, the Fairgrounds Working Group. We do have Jerry Bly here to speak to this, and he did send a memo, co-authored by he and Steve DeAngelis. I guess I just ask Eric for a one-minute intro into why we're considering this, and then we could hear from Jerry and move forward.
Well, we had some discussion about the makeup of the committee, the fact that it certainly is broad, but it's broad from a committee perspective, not necessarily from a reaching out into, into the community perspective, although all the community members that are volunteering are, you know, also community members. But in any event, the statement was made that we should look at opening up membership to people who aren't on a board or committee. And so that was discussed with the, I sent an email to the, to the Fairgrounds group. Steve and Jerry were very responsive and discussing it, and came up with some good ideas about possibly having individuals represent, I guess, what are effectively vacant spots for some of the boards and committees. So, for example, the age-friendly only has one appointee, the select board currently only has one appointee. The idea that we might be able to have, you know, a student rep come and represent somebody, or the select board could open up their vacancy and say, "Well, we're going to appoint someone from the public as a way to accommodate."
Could you tell us how many different committees have reps?
We have cemetery, age-friendly, conservation, recreation, trails, and the select board. So six.
No, you're missing one.
Fairgrounds?
No, this is the Fairgrounds Committee.
I know.
And so, is Steve the process leader or are both of you?
Both of them.
Okay, plus two, two leaders, okay. And currently, we are down one from age-friendly and one from the select board.
And potentially from the cemetery, too, depending on how you want to look at it. But anyway, that's where I'll stop.
Okay. Jerry, do you want to say anything, add anything to the discussion?
I'm not going to add much. I'm Jerry Bly, one of the co-process leaders, along with Steve, on the Fairgrounds Working Group. We're gearing up for sort of the next phase of our work. We had our public meetings, we had the town vote, and so we're looking to dive back into things come the fall. We did have a meeting over the summer. Carol attended, as well as a few other outside interests. And one of the points that was raised of maybe adding a public member to the committee. Again, I think we all sort of consider ourselves public members, but nonetheless. And so it, rather than go back and revisit the charter or whatever you call it for the Fairgrounds Working Group, we, Steve and I discussed, we thought it made sense for maybe to have the select board, since it was down a representative, to consider somebody to fill that, that role, maybe a non-select board member, as a member of the public. As I said in my memo, you know, I think our only guidance prerequisites would be that they have, you know, committed interest in, in the fairgrounds, and that they're also committed to the consensus-based process that we've worked with for, since we started back in January. And the committee feels really good about the work that it's been doing, the process, and it has gone through the new challenges that have been presented to us. We're anxious to pursue those as well. So we're not really looking to, you know, change things up too much, but this seemed like a good opportunity to do that. So that would be our request, that the select board accept applications or find someone to appoint as their second representative. And we may, as I say, bring in some other perspectives, not necessarily as members, but the historical society, the planning board, and the school, all may have things to offer to us.
Thank you. So, Eric, I'm hearing just a little bit of difference. It appears that the two process leaders have talked about the select board position, and you had mentioned possibly a person from cemetery or age-friendly. Would it make sense to, if, to just ask the committees to please, if they don't have someone on their committee to appoint, to let us know, or have they already let us know?
I guess this is a new enough idea that they haven't really been able to fully discuss it. I think the idea was that we would start by looking at the select board position that you do have discretion over, and maybe encourage further review. Part of the reason we're looking at this infill-type approach is that we've already got a fourteen, sixteen, fourteen-member group, excuse me, and that's quite large. And so, the idea was that by just expanding the scope, wasn't going to be a valuable thing, in my view. So the recommendation, and I think that's probably shared by the folks that have been working diligently through that committee process, that it's hard enough to get, get fourteen people together. So that an infill approach might be better, but that's all I have really on it for now.
But we, we agreed with the, the idea that adding a public member and maybe a student would be appropriate, too. And I think if you, if you look at the other two committees, the age-friendly committee, it doesn't say what age, just any age, friendly at all ages, right? So if they had, you know, and each committee was able to appoint two members, we only have one right now, Elaine, for the, from the age-friendly committee. But, you know, if we, I like, I like the idea of also pursuing a student member, and maybe they could fill one of the slots in the age-friendly committee is what we're thinking. And that's mostly because we, you know, the select board set up the original proposal. We'd like to just keep living within that, but expand to include some other folks.
Should we give consideration to just asking another member of the select board to be on the committee, since it was a select board member who is not there because Dennis is no longer a member of the select board?
Sean, are you still on it?
We could, but I think there's a great deal of merit to opening it up to the public.
At large.
At large, yes. I mean, we're all, like, again, as we've talked about, right? We're all the public, right? But, but I think just non-select board members, I think, would be good. That's my suggestion.
I think it's worth having this discussion, so that it's all out in the open, why, why we're doing that.
I might have the discussion, but that's what I would suggest.
I would agree with that as well, just for the simple fact that the more people that we get involved, the better. I mean, if we have one person on seven different committees, then that's six less voices we hear, you know, so.
I think I'm the one that's been advocating to go at large out to a citizen for, we keep saying over and over tonight, a diverse input and a diverse group with different input. And I just don't want this project to get, like, limesided at the ballot box again when they just are not aware of some of what's going on, people's opinions and stuff. So I think the more inclusive, the better. And be open-minded about, when you talk about a consensus-based process, that almost, I read it as, "If you want to be like mine, like we are, you can be part of us." That, that's how I read that. So that's.
That's not consensus-based.
That's not what the consensus model is, Carol, at all, just so you know. I mean, like, the, the idea of that is that if you don't agree, right, you state your reasons for agreeing, and then the committee's job was to, you know, we had people who did not agree with what we ended up with for a proposal. And the, so what we did is we then went about saying, "Okay, what are your reasons for disagreeing?" Okay? And then we looked into those further, right? And by doing that, we, so we didn't just say, "Well, sorry, we're going to vote, and it's thirteen to one, so you, you lose," right? So we actually considered everybody's point of view and did our homework.
You had to live with it.
And it's, and it's powerful.
And it's powerful, right? And so the way we would make a decision is, we would say, okay, how many people either agree with this, thumbs up, can live with the decision we're thinking of, or disagreeing? If there was one thumbs down, then we had to deal with it. Deal with it means dig into it further. What was your reasoning for not wanting to do whatever we proposed? And then, okay, so then that means we might need to do some more homework. Let's find out more about those reasons, right? So it gave great weight to everybody's opinion on the committee.
Can I just share what transpired at the last meeting I went to? Is, it was, I guess, a public hearing, a public meeting at the beach, and it talked about, talking about our discussion or looking at different sites for the basketball thing. When I went there, it was in no vague terms, someone said, we're not going to discuss that tonight. And I was just like, I, okay, I was blindsided because I thought that was one of the main things we were going for. And then I, in delving into more questions, someone said, we haven't even once brought up the topic of the basketball court and where it's going to be. And I'm like, so all this public outcry, and they've been meeting for months, and not once has the committee talked about where that might go. I didn't have a real good feeling that it was a priority, which is fine. So you guys, you know, and I, I encourage people to pass the thing, and we'll see what the final product is. And that's fine. I guess I was just, I walked out of the meeting, as you know. I was there like just a couple of minutes, and we're not even going to discuss that. Sorry, I got to get two rooms ready. And I came back because I wanted to talk about opening it up to the citizens. So, but I was really disappointed that it was something that we were going to look at different sites. And I thought, okay, you were going to discuss this and actually look at it at the beach. And I was told in no uncertain terms that that wasn't going to happen. So I said, I don't have time for that tonight, and I left. So however you guys proceed, that's fine. But just the way that was publicized, and I was a little disappointed.
I think we're diverging from our task at hand. I think it's important that everybody understand where we're going with this. And by forming a committee that operates on consensus, it gives an awful lot of power to one person who disagrees. And I think that's what we were getting at in the statement that came from Jerry and Steve, is that people have to be committed to the consensus process, which means that sometimes you don't get exactly what you want. And everybody needs to be aware of that, because we're a town of twenty-seven hundred people. And while this is a large committee of fourteen people, we are still just representatives, a very small group, representing the larger group. And it's really important to listen to other people's input. I think it's also important to remember that this is a committee, and committees meet and have very limited public input. The committees are there to meet with the members who are there, following an agenda of the committee and the meeting, so that they can process through things. So I'm not sure, you know, we have to address the concerns that you've raised based on what the agenda is and the limited time that there is for public input. I think the best thing we can do for people is to open this one position up, most likely. And then also to make sure that people understand that the real time for input is to contact members of the committee prior to their meetings and let your voice be heard. Because there's only, you can't have a public hearing at every meeting of the committee because it's something the town's passionate about. So I think people really need to get on the phone or send emails and let folks know what you're thinking. And that way, it gives the committee time to plan and to set an agenda where they can talk about the things that people are concerned about. And I think it would be addressed much better that way, so that everyone has a better feeling, the committee members as well as the public. Because we really don't want the public to feel like they're not being heard. So that's my input. Would the feeling of the select board be to open up a at-large position for the select board?
Does this require your motion, or not really?
We should probably have a motion, yep.
I would like to make the motion to open the Fairgrounds Committee to an at-large position.
From the select board spot. You're taking over one of the select board.
So we don't appoint another select board member?
Right.
Say that, so we're not taking from the public, or among us?
The person for the public, it's not going to be one of us, though.
Right.
Right, so we're talking about two positions, replacing Dennis and?
No.
No.
So. And then I don't understand what we just talked about.
Dennis was the select board.
Correct.
With Sean, so they were the two. So what we're talking about now is opening up that select board position to be an at-large from the community position.
A select board person.
Right.
That's what I want to.
But we're not making another position, so we're still going to keep it at the sixteen, at the fourteen, we're not expanding it. But we're going to replace a position from the select board with an at-large.
So what I said, instead of somebody from the select board?
Right.
Or in place of, thank you.
In place of, yeah.
We have to be really clear on these things, or it will come back to haunt us.
Thank you.
Is there a second? I think you were seconding it, Dave. Is there any further discussion?
Just for Steve, point of clarity, are you volunteering yourself to work with the age-friendly committee to get a student engagement on this too?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Great, all right, all those in favor? It is unanimous, okay.
So can I ask if somebody is interested in the position?
Eric will advertise this.
Advertise like always, we'll get the same thing, right? That we got for all the positions tonight.
Right.
Right?
Same committee appointment sheet. Thank you, Jerry, thank you, Steve. Appreciate the input and all the patience and waiting for us. Okay, moving on to our next item is bold business, and we have Dennis with us online. If you want to unmute Dennis, discuss the Heritage Day celebration. We have five minutes for this item. Eric, do you want to take it away?
For the Heritage Days?
Yeah.
All right, I wasn't here, so I'm completely off on this one.
Okay, so Dennis, let's hear from you, and then Sean and I can give some input, and Dave, we were all there.
Yes, hello. It's, I hope you can see this, this is a picture of the Makers Market and Community Fair that I took, it was a beautiful day. Genuinely, generally, I would say that the, the day was a success because of the weather. We didn't have to fight any rain, it was wet at the beach, but for the most part, it was a good day. This is, I told Eric this earlier today, but I have to say that the Heritage Days that we had this year is the Heritage Days that I have envisioned for the last six years organizing this event. We had great weather, we had a ton of community participation, we had live music, food, demonstrations at the beach, we had activities at the fairgrounds, things going on in the center of town, at the Union Meeting House, as well as the library. So generally, you know, a very successful day, especially at the beach. We had almost twenty different exhibitors and booths at the beach here. We also had folks raising money. The Miranda Cook Food Pantry raised almost eight hundred dollars just, just from their raffles and things like that, so they, they were there. And a lot of the vendors stated that, you know, they had good traffic, they had good sales, and it was definitely worth it for them. Each year, you know, we try to figure out ways that we can do better. There's always room for improvement, and so we're trying to figure out what we can do for next year to, you know, just continue to add value to the experience. It was, I have to point out a couple of things officially for the record. I really want to say thank you to Sean, who was at the beach and around and helping out, doing some cooking, helping out directing traffic, keeping his kids in line, it was, he was doing a great job. Greg Lineback was also there helping us cook, and so I want to say that. Want to also say a huge thanks to Noah, the beach attendant, Noah Rubin. He did a fantastic job with getting the place ready, helping set up all the areas, the markers where the booths were. So all the way around, just, just some really great volunteers there. And also want to thank all of the folks that sponsored or put on an activity. Part of what I say when, when we do Heritage Days is that I, my goal is not to run anyone's event or have anything to say. What I try to do is advertise and aggregate all of the different things into one source, which is sort of the Heritage Days Facebook page and press release. And just, just from the masons and their breakfast, it's great working with Mr. Dodge. The library had so much cool stuff happening, and the book sale and being at the beach. From the rec committee doing the kickball, the Union Meeting House having their open house with the vestry work and seeing all of that. Got to go back to Friday with the wine and cheese, as well as the sock hop. So, you know, it does take a lot of people to make this happen, and luckily, everyone had a nice vision of what they wanted. And in the end, I think the execution was, was pretty good. So thank you for your support, and we'll see what happens with 2024.
Dennis, I, this is Steve, and I just wanted to thank you for all the work you put in this. I know that it's a ton, and you mentioned a number of people help, but want to mention you specifically is doing a really good job. And I also have to say, I hope this is not inappropriate, but Dave and I are both particularly interested in how you manage, your, your appearance on Zoom is awesome, and Dave and I both have trouble doing this. You're managing to get your hair to wave back and forth really nicely in the wind. It looks like you're in a nice windstorm.
Well, you know.
I want to know how you do that, I want to get that for my Zoom meetings.
I've counted like sixty-eight different hairstyles since you've been speaking.
Right, I'm bald, I'm back, I'm shaved. I got an undercut, there we go.
It's so good.
Totally bald.
Hey, when you have all of this, it's easy to look beautiful, baby.
Oh, I love your modesty.
So the question begs to be asked, Dennis, do you see yourself running this again next year? And if not, do you see maybe working with someone to transition into this?
Yes, the answer is yes. So, so I envision helping to transition next year. And it's just because, you know, you know, for six years, this is my sixth year of doing this, and it even started as the Reed Field Festival, because at the time I started, Heritage Days was every other day, which is an event nightmare, so I'm glad that changed. But luckily, you know, the way I operate and, you know, I come at you a little wild and crazy, but I am a meticulous note-keeper. I have, from every year, I have folders and information. So what I, what I hope to do is to sort of hand over the reins to someone who can continue doing it for the future, but next year, what I would like to do is sort of be, you know, like a tandem person, someone to help out, kind of, kind of help back, you know, behind the scenes and things like that, if possible. But that's what I would envision. I don't want to just quit cold turkey, I want to be able to sort of pass it on to someone else and kind of let them know, and really, to be honest with you, you know, take it in a direction that, that, you know, they feel like is appropriate or the town feels like is appropriate, but that would be my, that would be my desire.
Well, that's great information, and very much appreciated by me that you're willing to help us transition this into the future. And maybe at the retreat, we can add this as one of our things, Eric, just to kind of consider how we find somebody, because Dennis has been trying to find somebody for six years to, like, run it with him. We haven't found that person, so we actually have to find someone, or there won't be one. So a big thank you, Dennis, it was a great success, and we really appreciate all you've done.
Absolutely, and again, I just want to say one last thing before I close out. Huge thanks to the Weather Vane. June and John, our food sponsors, donated the food, all of the food that we sold, the burgers, the dogs, the buns, the chips and things like that. So it just, you know, Heritage Days is a celebration of this community, and it was on display here, it was on display all throughout the town, and it makes me proud to be a part of that. So thank you very much for your support and trust in that.
Okay.
Thanks, Dennis.
Thanks, Dennis.
Thank you, Dennis.
So long.
All right, so we'll move on to new business, I'm going to try to still meet the agenda time. We have a special event liquor license for Camp KV. Eric, has any of the information changed since the packet was produced?
No, and we've granted them these in the past with no issues, so I don't see any reason not to proceed with this one as well.
So I would entertain a motion from someone.
Can I just ask one question about, I'm a little confused about this, because this is for Camp KV, right?
Yes.
But they say it's at, like, where was it? One seventy-seven North Wayne Road? So they're not doing it at Camp KV then?
That may be the, let me look at this one.
Says physical address of event.
It does say that, but it's at the meeting hall. Now, the applicant is Peter Clark, and his address is Waterville.
I just want to clarify that, because it seemed like, you know, Camp KV is a good place to do it, it's kind of out of the way, but I thought.
Yeah, that's interesting, I didn't catch that.
Seventy-seven North Wayne Road.
With that, I mean, that's, that's a private address, it's not Camp KV. So I don't know, I don't know why that, why that's listed, because the event address is the meeting hall, I don't believe they have a meeting hall at, well, they may, I don't know all their real estate dealings.
I don't want to, like, botch, you know, botch it for them, it's a fine thing to do, but it just seemed weird to me.
Yeah.
I think that we could, within legal boundaries, approve it for the interior, which it says it is, meeting hall of Camp KV in Reed Field, with the address to be corrected, the street address to be corrected.
Yeah, just.
It's coming like right up.
You know, if it's on one seventy-seven North Wayne Road, it's Camp Minnetoma.
Oh.
I wonder if he looked it up for us.
That's what I'm getting at.
Oh, is it not Camp KV?
I think it's meant to be at Camp Minnetoma, just from.
Oh, really?
If you Google one seventy-seven North Wayne Road, wow, yeah.
And, you know, the interior building layout, that is the layout of the meeting room at Minnetoma.
So the caterer may have screwed this up, what's the, what is the name of the hall?
So the scoop is not that it's the address, it should be Camp Minnetoma instead of Camp KV?
It should be Camp Minnetoma.
What is it, it says the name of the hall.
Meeting Hall, it just says.
Oh, it just says meeting.
Meeting Hall, yeah.
Good read the script.
Yeah, meeting hall, yeah.
I'm half blind without glasses on.
Do we want to try and give him a phone call, Eric?
Yeah, let me go give him a phone call.
And we'll move on to the next item?
Yeah.
Let me see if we can do that next item without you.
Probably can.
Well, we can at least, we can begin discussion of the next two items, and then have Eric fill in anything we have questions on.
If you get through the MOU, it's right there.
To make that phone call. Okay, thank you, Eric. All right, so we're going to move past that item and come back in a moment to it. So we're going to consider twenty-four oh twenty-two, a memorandum of understanding with the Weather Vane Restaurant and Lounge. I believe we've all seen this before. I think this was in our, or something about this was in a previous packet.
Yeah, it was.
And so then this is just the actual formal wording. When it was submitted to legal counsel, they actually said we were being a little too overly fluent with legalese, and we could take a few things out, because they really weren't necessary. And the Weather Vane has agreed to this, June and John, as well as the code officer and the town manager. They've already made all of the improvements to the physical ground, and they have submitted their signs to the code officer, who, Dave and I saw them a couple of weeks ago now. And they're having those made, and this has all been at their expense, nothing to do with the town. And they're ready to sign, and we're ready to sign if we approve.
So at that level, where they want to expand, they're not going to gravel, it's just going to be grass like it is now?
Yes, but if they want to improve the lower parking lot that is gravel, it can have more gravel added, but at their expense, not the town's. It would be to the benefit of the town, but not.
Right.
I think it's a no-brainer.
No, it is really, that's.
So if we're good with this, we can do a motion and proceed without Eric in the room.
I'll make a motion to approve.
The MOU.
MOU as written.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the MOU as written.
And authorize the town manager to sign?
And authorize the town manager to sign.
I will second that motion.
I have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
I have a question, and I really hope June and John don't want to stop running the Weather Vane Restaurant and Lounge, but if they did, I'm, I'm not going to underst, I don't want to interpret the legal language for the termination. But if they did, I'm, I'm not going to under, I don't want to interpret the legal language for the termination point. But if June and John were to sell, does that void this MOU?
Yes, because the party's signing it.
That's what I thought, but I just want, that was a point of clarification for me.
And that's great because that'll give us a chance to, if we want to consider redoing it, the new owners, we can talk about it then, right?
Well, and it, it's, the way it's written, it would have a yearly renewal anyway.
Okay.
Really?
Yep.
And this just goes till third, June thirty of next year? So every year this would be, so it would become sort of a pro forma.
It's really pro forma, you know, it's, it's not a big deal. You know, it's not like we're going to say to them next year, oh, you can't do that anymore, just arbitrarily.
But if somebody else wanted, if someone else wanted to buy and this was a, something with, with June. I don't know. That seems funny.
Well, it's a contract. This is a contract between the town and those particular owners of that particular business. So if that business changes hands, then.
They would just have to reapply it.
You have to reapply to the new owners. And if the business doesn't change hands, then this is something that we would just consider every year, similar to their liquor license.
But like, that just seems funny because you have a business and you have like a capacity and you have necessary parking, which is kind of where we have everywhere, usually by the planning board, but it's us because it's considered beach. Beach ordinance or beach?
It's town property. It's not a public road.
Okay, thank you. I was wondering what the difference is.
Right. And by having the beach ordinance approved, which the voters did at town meeting, it allows us now to set rules for the area of the beach. And this benefits the public at large as well as the town by benefiting the public as well as a business in town, which has, which is landlocked. There is no property they can purchase.
And my only reason for the question is, real estate's weird right now. And if somebody came in and offered John and June something and they don't ever want to have a bar and restaurant in that location, which I, I could see somebody wanting to make that a nice house or duplex or whatever. So I wanted, that was my thought on just if it did so happen to no longer be what it is, that we were able to avoid the parking situation.
So people couldn't have like guest parking for all of their guests for their fancy house or something at the beach.
Well, because this is with the Weather Vane, these owners.
I get it. That makes sense.
So are we ready to vote now?
I'm ready to vote.
All those in favor? It is unanimous. Okay, Eric, we've got one thing done. And were you able to reach anyone?
I left a voicemail. My, my thought would be that approve it for the physical address because it looks as though someone just blanked on which camp in Reed Field they were dueling for. So that's my thought and ask them to correct the, the proper name of the entity.
So if someone's willing to make a motion that encompasses that.
I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license for the class reunion at whichever camp it is going to be at on August twenty-seventh. I think that's it.
Can you sign it on behalf of one?
Is there a second? Second by Dave. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It is unanimous. We will move on to item twenty-four dash zero twenty-three. The management of surplus proceeds from the sale of tax-acquired property. So the first part of that is the check that was in the packet tonight to Douglas Aliborn for property that became the town's through non-payment of taxes. And then we listed it for sale and it was sold and the proceeds have now been dispersed pursuant to the most current state law and rulings from the Supreme Court that we have. And I think we are trying to consider changing our policy to an ordinance. Did I get that pretty close, Eric?
Yes.
So I believe the information that here, all the background showed how we came to get the property, how it's been disposed of and that we do have a town policy. We were advised by legal counsel that the policy really isn't strong enough language that we should have an ordinance. And the policy has been listed there. So I think what we're looking for is to decide if we would like to take recommendation to make this into an ordinance and have Eric move forward in that.
So essentially we're just having Eric write something up for us to consider.
Or have it written. Or find one that's already written. I always like those because they don't cost much.
Yeah, right.
This can't happen till November because it has to go to vote? Is that what I?
Because of the recent change in the Supreme Court.
And state law.
And state law. It's okay for us to disperse it. But to be one hundred percent correctly complying, we need to have an ordinance. And so if we have the ordinance ready for our next regularly scheduled town meeting, we don't have any other property that we've acquired.
So we don't want to acquire any more.
We'd rather not have any, but we don't have any currently other than this one. So if we do this for our next town meeting, when we have the, the town warrant go out, it'll have its public hearings and so on.
But is he going to get his proceeds now or in November?
He's getting them now.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, that sounded unfair to say, but you got to wait.
Well, that's what we've been doing.
It's already been too long. So we're, I'm really happy to move this along.
So if it's, if it meets the will of this board, if someone could make a motion asking Eric to pursue making this an ordinance, then we can move on.
I will make a motion to ask Eric to pursue making this an ordinance.
Specifically this being the policy on tax-acquired property.
Do I have a second? Dave seconded.
That was hard.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It is approved unanimously. Okay, moving on to twenty-four dash oh twenty-four. Consider any appropriate action pursuant to an executive session discussion that was held earlier this evening. Is there anyone who would like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize CEO to engage in enforcement action pursuant to one MRSA, section four oh five, subsection six E, and involve town council with drafting the letter.
I'll second that motion.
Angelica, do you want him to repeat anything?
The statute reference really isn't necessary, Sean. That's just the executive session reference.
Okay.
So I think if you just.
So make a motion authorize the CEO to engage in enforcement action and involve town council with drafting the letter.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It is unanimous. Moving on to twenty-four dash oh twenty-five, review the administrative calendar for the select board and town manager. And then there's one item after this and we might even be done early.
So the, the schedules that were in the packet are the old versions, just kind of to show where we've been. This is a tool that we haven't really used other than for reference in agenda setting. It hasn't been used actively since two thousand fifteen. So it's something that we can look at as a way to look ahead, have an idea of what's going to be on the agendas, help populate the agendas. And to some extent, the, the second document that was included talks more about the time commitments and how things are broken down. And that's useful, but probably not as much of a focus as the first document, which shows, well, so in July, you want to be working on these three things. In, in September, you're doing the chairs meeting. In October, you're doing the start of the budget process. In November, you have the start of not being able to get anything done because it's the holidays or whatever it might be. That's the idea is that we have these calendars to identify milestones, really.
Is this the first and this the second or first and second?
One of them talks more about the time for individual agenda items and that's what I was referring to is the second document.
So the one page?
Yes, I believe that's correct. Yeah. Yeah, I can't see that from here. So let me, let me look on my.
Well, there was a one page and a three page. I mean, and there, it's just that one was more updated than the other. I can tell you all that I authored the single page sheet because there was nothing at that time in two thousand and ten. And I felt that we needed something so that it wasn't just. It goes back to something Chris Olson was saying about setting up things and starting a process. And if the town manager leaves, who knows this information? Is anyone on the select board keeping track of it? Aw, no. You know, and so as people flow in and out of jobs or elected positions, who's keeping track of stuff? And that's why I thought this document was important, which is why I asked Eric to bring it back up again. And I also like it because it lets all of the select board members then, as well as the public, understand that there are things that happen routinely and have to happen every year. And it, it lets us all be more accountable, so.
So, yeah, but the more detailed one, I think, is the one that's more, more valuable. Because it's more specific about the items and it doesn't get so much into the detail of five minutes for this or twenty minutes for that, so.
Okay. Whatever we do, I'd like to see it on one page if we can. Or maybe.
I think we can fit it on one page and I'll probably use a format that's similar to, to the, the one that reads vertically, I guess.
Yep.
And so I'll just, I'll, I'll work on that if it's the will of the board, which it sounds like there's no objection, so.
I, I was just curious if, or how we track upcoming RFPs and such to that as well. So I know, I saw that the RFP for the snow plow and renewing that contract's listed, but our other bids processes. So where, how can we incorporate that into this?
I'm not sure we can.
I know we can't really.
The work, I mean.
I think it'd be great for internal document for those of us that, you know, what do we know that's coming up and where, what's important?
I think, I mean, the, the, the paving, we could try to put on a schedule. I think it really depends on what we have for budget, what's available, what the pressing work is. I'd, I'd have a hard time finding a lot of, I guess, value in trying to schedule that stuff out because it changes so much. Doesn't mean we shouldn't have maybe a list of, here are things that we put out to RFP through the course of the year and maybe generally when we do them. But we, we just don't have, you know, really the ability to put things on a, a month by month basis.
Well, even maybe not month by month, I guess. What if, what, what? Can't find this word. What services do we have in town in order to run, run our municipality that are on a regular basis that needs upkeep or contract renewals for, for us to, like internet, for example, like our, our services like that or our TV?
Or our waste haulers.
Yeah.
Things like that.
So, so you're looking more at contract terms, a schedule of the terms of the existing contracts and when they, when they expire, when the renewal dates are. That's more what you're looking at.
So that could be like a second sheet that, that, that shows contracts.
Because it might be obviously, you know, we have some contracts that might run four years or two years or six years.
I, I see what you're saying. So you're not looking at the.
I think that's a good thing for us to be able to, to look at and especially, we're talking, we're going into our retreat, right? And so what if one of our action items is to do something that, oh, that actually comes up next year? So yeah, let's pull that in now. Not that I know what this is. I'm just throwing out blankets here.
Yeah, no, no, I think it's, it's a good suggestion and it would be helpful to have for that, for that retreat discussion. Because we do have in, you know, two years coming up, the, the snow contract renewal. And we've already been told that, you know, we're, we're probably not going to be working with the same provider, not because they don't enjoy the work or the money. It's because they're retiring effectively and.
That happened with the last contract.
Happened with the last one, so.
We caused them all to retire.
Well, no, but that whole, all of the service industries are basically being populated by the older generations. And Dave's one of the youngest working in those kinds of fields.
I don't feel it.
And as these people retire, there are not younger folks coming up to do those jobs. And so that's a whole situation we have to face. And, you know, there are some local, now not necessarily in Reed Field, but in surrounding towns, there are some people, but they're becoming smaller everywhere. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a big problem in Maine. It's a slightly less problem nationwide. But we are, you know, the oldest aged community or state out of the fifties, so.
Doing my part. I'm trying to.
Hi, Eric. So what I'm hearing is, I think, that we'd like Eric to give us an updated, his version of this. Because I think this was prior to you being here. So if you could populate this with when things are happening according to our current schedules.
Yeah.
Then we can all, excuse me, dissect that and give opinions and revise it and make it workable so that it meets everybody's needs and maybe have a second page that talks about contracts.
Can I make a motion to extend the meeting?
Nope.
No?
We're going to be done. We have one more item.
Oh, I thought it was till eight thirty.
It was eight forty.
Eight forty.
Oh.
You're on it though. That's. Okay. Well, we might have, we might, we'll, we'll see how.
Do we need to vote on that or can we just say we want them to do it?
We do not need to vote on that.
Good.
Twenty-four oh twenty-six is conduct a first reading of the Reed Field Select Board Meeting Public Participation Guidelines. So that was in your packet. Hopefully you've had a chance to read it. All I did was take the Lewiston one and meshed it with what Reed Field already had. So it was more of a Lewiston format and kind of, yeah, broad structure. And then I put all the Reed Field specifics in it. I copied and pasted probably two thirds of what was in the Reed Field document right into here, same exact language. So unless you have any strong objections to it, we can count this as a first reading. And if you have anything specific you'd like to say, you can say it now or at our next meeting, which is in a month. And that would be our second reading where we could vote on it.
That was going to be my question. So our process, because it's different for different boys, is we have two readings and at the second reading, we vote. We can vote. We don't have to.
Well, you could say we don't want to do this at all.
Right, okay, but.
In which case we, the policy that's still there would stand unless you vote to abolish it.
But I know like the school board, I think they have like three readings before they vote or something, something like that, you know, it's like just checking process.
Right. Our policy is basically to have two readings, but we don't have to because it's a policy. So we could do it at one reading.
Gotcha.
So if, if things are really, if we're meeting every two weeks, it makes a little more sense to always have two readings. Because in this case, it's making it a whole month later. But I'm fine with that because, I mean, we had a great meeting tonight and it could have been a difficult meeting and the public and the board were all wonderful, so.
On that, no, no, I'm just kidding. I just had one point to maybe have a discussion about on page one sixteen. Point number one, governing rules, public comment periods. The fir, the second half of number one is talking about Zoom meetings. And if someone asks a question, do they have to state who they are? And my only concern with that is someone pointed out if they have a small business and they might be asking a question that's controversial, they wouldn't want backlash. So it may be something that they want to bring forward as a topic or a question that they have, but they don't want to identify themselves.
Well, our meetings are public and that's basically, all meetings are held that way. I would say if somebody, I, I would not be in favor of taking that out. People need to be able to speak their minds and not fear for backlash. If they are, a great place to start with that would be by contacting the town manager directly. Ask to have a meeting with just the town manager and shut the door, have a conversation. It's a private confidential conversation.
That makes a lot of sense because, I mean, like, it, it doesn't seem like it should have different rules for the people in public. Because the person in public who's a small business owner, they, they came to comment, well, people are going to know, right? And I don't think it should, should be any different for someone on Zoom, you know, because it's part of the same public meeting, but that's.
Well, or they can contact any board member and ask.
Contact any board member or contact Eric and, and then they can have that confidential.
For example, some of the things I'm bringing forth on the fire station is not who you think it is. And I'm not at liberty to say. So that's what I'm saying is if something changes down the road. And, and I have a curiosity as well. So that's one example. But they did have a concern, this is not about that anymore, of a, of a private business that may have backlash if. And, and people that come to the meeting, of course. And people that come to the meeting, of course, are very open to being identified and seen and heard, whatever. That was just a real concern somebody had.
I think for me, Zoom has been a great way to engage people that can't get here to make those comments. I think it shouldn't be used as a hiding place to make public comments. If you're going to make a public comment in a public space at a public meeting, then you're making a public comment for yourself.
And I think it's very important that we speak for ourselves, and if we're speaking for a resident, then I need to say this is for resident person X who lives at location Y. Not that, well, I've heard from seven people. Well, then tell me who the seven people are, or I don't really want to hear. Because this is public, and the public is always demanding that we be transparent. And so that takes a certain amount of nerve to come and be public. But there are ways that you can do that without doing that, which is you can contact any of us confidentially, and you can contact the town manager. And then, you know, hopefully, through any one of us, we would be able to help people allay their fears or to approach a situation maybe from a different angle that wouldn't see those fears realized. Does that make sense? Oftentimes, we can question a policy rather than question an action or question a person. So.
And I would assume a lot of this stuff is common sense applies to a lot of it. Somebody wants to comment anonymously and thank everybody for the great job that they're doing, I don't think anybody has a problem with it, you know what I mean? So I think this is.
Yes.
Some of the things that you put in there are used if needed kind of thing, and most of the time, they don't, they aren't needed.
As evidenced by the fact that this was written in 2010, and we weren't even really aware of it when we needed it. And so a lot of things that we, I would say probably 90% of the laws in our country aren't really used until they're needed.
Until they're needed, right.
Because most of us are happy to abide by them, but it's when things get out of hand that we need something already there to deal with it.
On that topic.
So now, do you want to extend the meeting?
I would like to send the meeting for two minutes.
Let's do five.
Five minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Sorry.
I was so hopeful that one time we could not have sent me. I thought it was going to happen.
I tried, Steve.
My only thing is getting back to the Zoom again, so if someone has a question, should we be, I don't know that this was done in the past, should we say, hey, there's a question on Zoom, and this is what they're asking, and then us answer it out loud? I think it was just like somebody would just answer it online.
Well, you were monitoring the chat tonight, correct?
Yeah, there was no questions.
Okay, but if there is?
Right.
I don't know, because people said there were a lot of questions, and some were answered and some weren't, and.
And sometimes they're just comments, not questions.
Right, but if it's a question, should we be saying there's a question on the chat and?
I think you would.
I think we would, and I think we have.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep, that's the intention of this, is just how we did it tonight. If it's not on the agenda, speak at that time at the beginning, and if it's for an agenda item, then speak during that time. And you can speak via Zoom or via being in the building with us.
And I don't think anybody would really have a problem with even an anonymous question. There's a difference in a question and a comment.
There's difference in a question and a comment.
Those can be too.
Right.
Right.
Right. But it's proper Zoom etiquette to have a name. And, you know, not Sandy Child or something, you know.
A resident, whatever.
A resident.
And the last thing. I'm sorry, on page fifteen, one fifteen appropriately, it's talking about fifteen-minute time interval will be reserved for potential discussion.
Yep.
In the general public exceeds fifteen minutes, the public comment period will be suspended. So they're saying fifteen minutes and that's it?
Right.
But public comment is, I think, essential.
But so is the agenda. I mean, we've been using, well, we had been using five, and we've expanded it to ten, and I'm proposing we go to fifteen, and I think our original thing was fifteen, and Lewiston's was fifteen. Of course, you know, if you have 50 people here and there's pressing need, then I believe it's within the select board's purview to say, I would like to extend this. We have, we have enough going on, but I think it's also important to let people know that if there are 50 people here, if what Dave said really hit what you said, what you wanted to say, hi, I'm Carol, I live here, and I completely agree with Dave, and then sit down and, and, you know, kind of go through it that way, because if you hear 15 people are saying, we all agree with this, that's pretty powerful. You don't have to listen to each statement.
Right.
I think that's kind of getting the flow of the meeting, because we still have the other business to attend to, and if.
Catherine, a quick question. I mean, that's just for the select board meetings regularly, right, not for a public hearing, which would be a much different situation.
Right.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And the one thing I wanted to add about the privacy thing, the anonymous comments or questions even, I mean, just because someone says they're a resident on their name on Zoom doesn't mean they are. I'm not saying that someone from Wayne or Fayette or Mount Vernon might try to meddle, but we don't have any idea if they're from Florida or Kazakhstan or Reedfield, you know, so.
Right, right. So it is important.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, there was one more thing that I thought was a little harsh, and it couldn't wait till next time.
No, but point it out, so we can be thinking about it.
I am very trying.
So while Carol's looking for that, does anyone have anything they'd like to have on the agenda for the next meeting? Our next meeting is going to be September 11th at 5:30 for three hours until 8:30. It's the Select Board Retreat. And then we'll be meeting the Monday after that, the 18th, for our regular meeting, hopefully only 6:30 to 8:30.
And I'll be sending out an email beforehand, a week or so before that meeting with packet and preparation materials. I'm going to ask you all to put together your goals and comments and thoughts so that we can have that ready. We're not going to have a moderator, so it'll be really helpful. I'll ask you to provide me with your interests for the meeting. I'll put that together, compile it, feed it back to everybody. That way, we can be prepared to discuss it and be a little bit more efficient in trying to get through that three hours quickly. We'll also order pizza, so if there's any objections to pepperoni, sausage, onion, and cheese, let me know. Maybe I'll throw a vegetable on.
And do we need Angelica for that meeting?
I'll eat it.
If there's free pizza, she should get it on too.
Angelica, I think, yeah.
She's always, she's always here. We don't feed her.
I'll ask her to come, so she can take notes.
Okay. Angelica, are you willing to be here, meet your schedule? Well, with not having a moderator, with not having a facilitator, we need somebody who does the record for us so that we know where we're going. Were you able to find it, Carol?
I did. So it's number nine on one seventeen, and it just was a little, I don't know, if I'm not misunderstanding it, persons present at select board meeting shall not interrupt nor applaud nor otherwise express approval or disapproval of any statements made, action, made or actions taken, except for those instances, da-da-da-da-da. So shall not interrupt, I understand. But if you say, I really, you know, and I think we do that a lot, I really like that comment, or that's the same thing I'm thinking. Is that precluding that? Because it says not applaud or otherwise express approval or disapproval of any statement. I thought was a little bit like rigid.
I think, I think that was in both places previously, but we can look at that. We're a little bit over, so do we have permission to extend for another three minutes?
Oh, we can just leave that for now.
All those in favor of three more minutes? Okay, there were three of us. I think what it's getting at is not having, in a public meeting, if you have citizen X get up and make a statement, and five people in the audience are like, yeah, right on, yeah, go, go, go. Now you've intimidated person Y who was going to get up and say something that wasn't maybe in agreement with that. And I think that's why these types of statements are in public meeting protocol. I don't think, as we talked about a minute ago, it's not to be perfectly rigid, but to prevent people from being disparaging or intimidating.
I think it protects us if there is a situation where we do have to call upon, please stop. None, you know, that's all. I think it's just use it within
There needs to be a reasonableness to all of this, right?
Okay. Okay, are you going to say, I agree with that, and another thing? At least it's something different instead of saying ditto, ditto, ditto.
Right, yep.
I just want to check on, are we good with that?
Yep.
Dates, we have our October meeting also, just because I, I don't want, I feel like our September meeting's very late.
Eric, we came up with some dates. Do you have them?
I have, I have some proposals. I was going to actually suggest we talk about the scheduling of October, November, and December at the September 18th meeting, but the meeting dates we were looking at for October, just for the record, were the 16th and the 30th, because we're back to twice monthly.
That's right.
And then what for November?
13th and 27th, and then December 11th, because we only have one in December.
13 and 27 in November, and then December?
11.
11th.
That went way fast. I'm sorry. Can you repeat October?
Sure, yeah.
16 and 30?
30. I thought it said 16 and 13. It's something like that.
And then 13 and 27?
Thank you.
And the 11 in 12 months? And of course, we can.
11th, and that's it?
Yep.
Okay.
I make a motion adjourn.
I second my motion.
All in favor? So moved.
Thanks, everybody. You can meet.
Forty-nine. Sorry, Steve, it was nine minutes over.
It was close, it was close.
Well, we all worked on it.
I always, I always say, Tara, so when's the meeting?